All right, Mr. Underconnect, will you call the roll?
Dr. Brennan is absent. Mr. Corey?
Here.
Mr. Hayward?
Here.
Ms. McTebola?
Here.
Dr. Poochie Bender?
Here.
Dr. Robinson is absent. Ms. Scarpelli is absent. Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Ms. Rundell?
Here. Mr. Corey, will you lead us in the flag salute?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, founded with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of meeting. In accordance with P. L. 1975, Chapter 231, notice of tonight's meeting was mailed to the record in the Ridgewood News on August 24th, 2020. Notice of this meeting was also mailed to the borough clerk and was posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education Office in the Administration Building on the same date. Copies of the procedures in effect for regular board meetings are available for the public at tonight's meeting. Ms. Stevenson, will you read the mission statement?
The Glen Rock School District, founded on principles of education in partnership with a supportive community, provides an exceptional education to all students to cultivate resilient, responsible, and engaged global citizens.
Thank you. All right, so, welcome, everybody. It's nice to see so many of you here tonight. I want to start with an overview, explain our role as trustees, and hopefully we can all have a better understanding of how this process works before we leave here tonight. I was reminded last week that I have a platform and a voice, so instead of letting some people assume the worst about my character and post those thoughts on social media, I figured I should at least say my piece and make it incredibly clear. I will start by restating some of what Mr. Van Ness said last Monday night about the process. After legislation is passed, the state writes the standards based on that legislation, and that guides districts in writing their curriculum. So let's talk a little bit about curriculum. Another way to think of curriculum would be scope and sequence. Scope encompasses the theory, planning, design, and development of state standards. Sequence is more like the mapping out of those skills, knowledge, and content, so they build on each other. Scope does not include detailed lesson plans. Those are written by the teachers. For sequence, it might say something would be taught in a four- to six-week timeframe. That just means the lessons will be taught within that timeframe, not that it is being taught for four to six weeks. But it sets a timeframe, so the students are learning things in a way that builds on previous skills, knowledge, and content. It maps out lessons in order for students to be successful. All right, so, in order for the district to create a curriculum, the Board of Ed would hire teachers or other experts to write a curriculum over the summer. If that curriculum meets the standards set forth by the state, we are obligated to approve it. What do I mean by obligated? New Jersey school boards operates with a code of ethics. The very first one is A, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. I realize people think we have this crazy power, but we are obligated to uphold the standards set forth by the State Board of Education. Once the curriculum is approved by the B.O.E., teachers can begin to dig deeper into their lesson plans, giving great thought to their specific students' needs. It is at this time parents can ask their child's teacher to explain their lesson plans, ask questions, and if they still feel it is in conflict with their conscience, morals, or religious beliefs, they can opt out. Parents can opt out their child by contacting the building principal, who will also be able to answer questions like, what will they be doing during that time? What time of day will they be learning health? Who will supervise them? And what room will they be in during that time? The sample letter you saw on Monday night includes how to opt out, and you can opt out of one lesson or all of them. And although some here believe that this is an overreach by the state, I believe our students deserve a safe place where they can feel welcomed, proud of who they are, and for all of our children to be celebrated because of their differences, not just because of some state mandate. To every kid out there that feels like we gave too much weight to the voices who want to hide you away until the last day of school or pretend none of this exists, please know that I support you, I will always work for you, and I'm very proud of you. Dr. Charleston?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rundell. I don't have as well-prepared a speech as you, but I do want to echo a lot of the same things that she shared. First of all, the community should be aware that I fully support the curriculum as written. As Ms. Rundell shared, over the summer, Mr. Van Ness and his administrative team solicited teachers, Glen Rock teachers, to write the curriculum over the summer. They volunteered, and they put a lot of hours into that, and they are our experts. They've been teaching health, several of them, for years. Once that curriculum was done and was reviewed by Mr. Van Ness's office, we're comfortable that it aligns with the New Jersey standards. And I would not have put it on the agenda if I didn't support it. So when this was on the agenda last week, prior to the agenda being posted, I met with the Board President and Vice President and their roles as putting the agenda together. We went over all items on the agenda. They supported it as well, and that's how it made it there. And I want to be clear that I fully support the teachers that wrote this curriculum. I fully support the administrative team that oversaw it. They really think they did a wonderful job, and they were really charged with a lot of the things that we've been working on here in this district since my arrival, and things that I support. And I really want to be clear, because maybe sometimes, as Ms. Rundell alluded to, our silence means that we're complicit or supportive when someone makes comments that we disagree with. Mr. Van Ness has done a really nice job in initiating diversity, equity, and inclusion in the district. Almost two years ago, we had training for the administrative team. We then expanded that training to the Board of Education. It was one of the board goals last year. He formed a committee of stakeholders. Those included teachers, parents, and community members. They ran focus groups, and they came up with an equity plan. That's going to be expanded. Actually, it starts with training for staff when staff return on September 1st and September 6th. And we will continue to move forward with our diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, because similar to what Ms. Rundell said, we want all of our students and staff to feel safe and supported and welcomed and represented in whether it's textbooks or lessons or things along those lines. So that's the direction we're going in. And as a leader, I feel like I should have done more over the last several months in speaking out. I've allowed those hateful comments that have come out by certain members of the public that have not responded, and I won't do that anymore. I think highly of Glen Rock. I think Glen Rock is an inclusive community. I think that our job is to ensure that all of our students are safe, feel safe, and are educated and have experience to all different types of curricular materials that are representative of them. So that's where I'm at today. The last thing I want to say is that the last couple of meetings, the decorum, has been poor, to say the least. People have come up to speak and have been jeered at, yelled at, intimidated to not speak. That will not happen going forward. If that happens, you will be asked to leave. That is in our rules. That is in our bylaws. All voices matter. For the last several months, really since the time that I've been here as superintendent, we have not interrupted public speakers. We have listened to them, whether we agree or disagree. And that goes for the audience as well. So I think Glen Rock is a wonderful community where we can have differences of opinion, but we certainly can do that respectfully. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, so, sorry. So I'll open it up for discussion with the board. Leave our bylaws. Say we have about 20 minutes. So if anyone has something they'd like to say, we'll try and do this in a nice civilized way. So let's raise our hands and talk in a nice orderly fashion. Does anybody have anything? Nothing? We discuss, then they talk, then we vote? No? All right. So I will close our discussion then and open it up for public comment. But before I do, just...
Should I interrupt? Because I think it's really important for me to thank Dr. Charleston for his openness in acknowledging that we all make mistakes, and I thank you for recognizing that maybe we could have done a little better job on this. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to go through our policy for public participation in board meetings. Just make it. So public participation shall be governed by the following rules. Participant must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface comments, announce your name, municipality residence. If the event, in the event it appears public comment portion of the meeting may exceed 15 minutes, the presiding officer may limit each statement made by a participant to three minutes. So we're going to go three minutes tonight. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements, questions, or inquiries shall be directed to the presiding officer, or any question or inquiries directed by a participant to other board members shall be redirected to the presiding officer, who shall determine if such statement, question, or inquiry shall be addressed. I may interrupt if, or the presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate participant's statement, question, or inquiry if it's too lengthy. Interrupt or warn a participant when a statement is a question, abusive, obscene, or defamatory. Request any person to leave the meeting when you do not observe reasonable decorum. Request the assistance of law enforcement. Call for recess or adjournment, or waive these rules if necessary. So we're going to...
May I add one thing?
Yes.
Also want to remind members of the public that this is a Cal meeting, so the only comments tonight will be on the curriculum that's on the agenda. There'll be no other comments that will be listened to tonight. Only comments on the curriculum that the Board is considering voting on tonight, just so we're clear on that. Thank you.
All right, so, state your name and address. Three minutes. Mr. Underconnect will take time. Let me know. And just please keep it civil. Open public comment at 6:45.
Frank Triolo, 32 Iona Place. Two quick points. First one, Board Policy 2210 for the curriculum clearly states that the night that you present the curriculum, you don't vote on it. So you actually broke a board policy by voting on the curriculum that day. I had a speech that I was going to say, and I don't need to do it anymore, because the smartest person in this room is here, and I don't know her name. She said at the meeting last time, "We could probably accomplish more over a glass of Chardonnay or a ginger ale than we are here." I don't know your name? Rose, I'm sorry, yes. Could you come up here with me for one second? Would you join me? Okay. So basically, what I want to say is, I agree with everything she said. I'm assuming you're a parent in town, so you're a parent in town. I believe our core values are exactly the same. You love your children. You would fiercely defend them. You would do anything to see your children and any other children in this town happy. You don't care if they're white, black, if they're male, female. You don't care in any way, shape, or form. Your family is what's most important to you, and in the end, every single person in this room has the exact same core values. So what are we arguing over here? This has all become politics. It's not really what we all are. Everyone here who would be protesting against this curriculum does not want any other parent in this room to not have their rights. They have the right to believe in certain things, just as we have the right to not believe in them. Having said that, both sides have to be represented. That was a great point that you had made, and it's obviously struck a chord with me, because out of everything said, that was the most poignant thing said, was that if we just sat down and we just talked like adults, we would probably accomplish all this. So anyone who comes up here and protests this, we don't want any parents who believe in this to not have it if that's what they believe, but the other side needs to be represented as well. We want to make sure that all kids in this town are happy, they're safe, they can all learn in a safe environment. That's ultimately what everybody wants, but yet here we are drawing lines in the sand to see what we're going to fight over. I mean, prime example is, Sinead, you and I have always gotten along. Cormick is one of the greatest kids I've ever met. I've known you since the co-op. Who cares if we don't agree on certain things? Because at the core, we're exactly the same. Exactly the same. Every single person in this room is that way, and that's why everyone's here, whether you're on one side or the other. We should, you had said, we have to celebrate our differences. Well, that's what we should do, is acknowledge that some people believe in it, some people don't. Both sides have to be accounted for. The only thing I would say is this, instead of an opt-out, what about the possibility of an opt-in? You have these things as an elective, and you opt in to it. That's it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ed Morley. I live in 89 Valley Road. And initially, I questioned whether third grade would be appropriate. It seemed like, isn't that a bit young? I think a lot of people might have wondered whether that might be too young. But then I realized it's eight or nine years old. And then I remembered back in the schoolyard in the 70s and the vicious things that kids would say at that age about, you know, sexual orientation. And, you know, I really, I'm sure that there were kids who were homosexual, but they sure wouldn't admit it, because they would have been tormented terribly. And I have two sons who graduated from Glen Rock several years ago, and, you know, Glen Rock was much more tolerant. It was much better. This is a better world that we're in now because there's more tolerance. And I think that this curriculum is taking us a step further, because I think if the eight- or nine-year-olds are learning to be tolerant a little bit more and realizing that the fact that a certain percentage of the population is not heterosexual, and that's just a fact, and so we have to be tolerant of them, we have to be kind to them, as we need to be kind and tolerant to everybody. And if they're learning that at an early age of eight and nine, that is great. So I'm just, I just want to leave it there and say I support the curriculum change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. Elizabeth Carr, 231 Hamilton Avenue. This is not a game, and if you think it is, the ones who are going to lose are the staff and the students. For many, it's not about what is age-appropriate, but a matter of allowing parents to see the curriculum before it is taught. But if, instead of transparency, the superintendent and assistant superintendent kept it under wraps. And according to your policy number 2210, and I quote, certain policy lines require you to encourage public input. I don't recall it ever being encouraged. Although this process, and no vote until the next meeting. Although this process has been done in the past, the biggest difference is that Dr. Regan made frequent presentations to parents, who they were all well-versed before the meritoria was taught. In addition, the comment made by the assistant superintendent about the former director of curriculum is false. Dr. Regan did curriculum with a team every summer and presented it to the Board in advance of the vote. Her five-year plan clearly worked because we were an achieving district. Please don't make negative statements about her, as I haven't seen anything done by you until now, which leads me to the following question.
Ms. Carr, can you keep it to the health curriculum?
I am.
Not other people. Thank you.
I am. Thank you. If the health curriculum, what standard was state-approved in 2020, why did you, Mr. Van Ness, wait two years to create curriculum? I understand COVID interrupted some time, but you had 18 months to do it. Further, as a matter of fact, Mr. Van Ness spent $95,000 this past summer while the budget was lower under the previous director of curriculum when we didn't have supervisors. In addition, regarding curriculum, don't you have to be certified in a certain, in subject area to teach it? Your physics teacher is going from sixth-grade science to high school physics. This is cited in policy 2210. Can you explain this decision to me? And then finally, I'd like to make mention of the multiple absences that I see in the room. Specifically, one of your trustees has had four absences in a row. I'm allowed to discuss this because it goes to attendance. Specifically, one of your trustees has four absences in a row, and your bylaw states that three in a row with good reason, if, with good reason is acceptable, without good reason is not, and I'd like you to look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to stick to just the health curriculum, not all the curriculum, just health curriculum, like just the health curriculum, not teachers or staff, any of that, just the health curriculum.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Kate Greenberg, 49 Oxford. I have an eighth grader at the middle school and a third grader at Byrd. For the past 16 years, I have designed and implemented sex education curricula in New York City public schools. I'm a certified health education specialist, and I have a master's degree in health education and promotion from Teachers College, Columbia University. I have carefully reviewed the curriculum provided by the Board of Education. The curriculum not only meets the mandated New Jersey student learning standards for health education, it meets the national sexuality education standards, followed by respected health educators all over the country. I'd like to explain what makes the curriculum age-appropriate and how it follows best practices, focusing on the content areas that have raised the most concern. The K-2 curriculum teaches that people differ in race, ethnicity, ability, and gender identity. There's an emphasis on belonging and bullying prevention. We know that kids become aware of differences in skin tone and ability prior to kindergarten, and many kids are aware of their gender identity beginning at ages two and three. There are and will continue to be kids in our schools, K-12, whose gender differs from their sex assigned at birth. Learning about and understanding people's differences creates peer support and school belonging, two of the most important protective factors for marginalized youth. The third through sixth grade content includes education about puberty and reproduction. Since some kids start puberty at eight and nine years old, and the average child starts puberty between ages 10 and 12, third, fourth, and fifth graders need education about the changes they and their peers will experience. Understanding reproduction at this age is appropriate. During puberty, our bodies become capable of reproducing, and our children need to know how and why their bodies will change. Learning basic information about IVF, surrogacy, and adoption means all families are represented. These are valid ways that pregnancy occurs, and families are made. Since feelings of physical and/or romantic attraction begin during puberty, this is an appropriate time to learn about attraction and sexual orientation, and to encourage kids to talk with trusted and knowledgeable adults about feelings or questions they have. Kids and teens need medically accurate, fact-based education about family diversity, gender, puberty, consent, healthy relationships, sexual orientation, and sexual health, so they can make healthy and informed decisions about their bodies and relationships as they grow. We want our kids to be well-educated and informed, not to get information or misinformation from their peers, social media, or the internet. Not only do they need this information, our state mandates that they get it. Why can't we just teach this at home? Because sex education is multidisciplinary. It combines elements of anatomy and physiology, health, social studies, and psychology.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ready? Hi, Dave Moore, 11 Eaton Place. And just, I'm sorry to hop in front of you, but I just want to go home. I just had surgery on Friday. Just looking around the room from last week, I just want to say thank you to the Board. It just shows that you guys are willing to have open conversation and communicate. I know it slows things down, but obviously a lot of people have a lot to say. I would be very surprised if anyone was totally against what's going on here, but I think what we will probably see is a lot of people want to talk about it. You know, I can't, I mean, so encouraging that so many different people that I know from town are here tonight. There was no one here last week, right? And this is what it's supposed to be. It's supposed to have an open forum where parents are going to discuss what we're going to teach our kids on sensitive subjects. You know, we just don't know what it is. You know, and that's really what it comes down to, and I just think that if we just kind of found, and the other thing is this, if the vote doesn't go your way, our way, or somebody's way, it doesn't matter, because at least we had a conversation about it, and we knew where you were coming from. You know what I'm saying? Like, that's what we want to have. And I think that, just from a PR perspective for you guys, I think that we've come a long way since last week. Thank you for that. So as far as going forward, I like this. I think this conversation should be had anywhere, you know, socially, outside, parents getting together, having these conversations. This format isn't the most conducive. I did book the Glen Rock Inn for the 14th, went to Wednesday night to have an open discussion meeting. I'm going to be the emcee. I'm really big on nobody really treating people like crap and making people feel bad. I don't, I mean, Facebook is the worst form of communication. That's horrible. Okay, so it's just kind of the lamest thing. So let's get together and talk. We don't have to agree. Let's get to know each other. The town's so small. No one's ever more than a mile away from the Glen Rock Inn. We get to do this. Glen Rock as a project can do something different than any other town. We're small enough to know each other, communicate with each other, communicate, connect, collaborate. Let's create a great education going forward. I'm not here to tell you what should or should not be in there. I'm here to just encourage more of this open communication with each other. It's the right thing to do, and I just appreciate your efforts so far. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Moore.
Hi, my name is Dr. Allison Popolardo, and I live at 165 Berkeley Place. I've been a resident of Glen Rock for over 20 years, and I have three children, one who recently graduated from high school, and two who are currently in middle school, high school. Glen Rock has been a wonderful town for us to raise our family, and I've enjoyed volunteering with many organizations in town, including HSA, Girl Scouts, and Top Soccer. I don't particularly like public speaking, but after hearing some of the public comments from the last meeting, I wanted to voice my support for the Board of Ed and its efforts to create a more inclusive school district, including passing the new state health curriculum. What do we all want for our kids? I think for all of us, it's the same, to have kids that are safe, happy, and healthy. And I think the new health curriculum helps support this goal. Imagine if your child is gay, trans, non-binary, or gender fluid. How would you want them to be treated? I think, again, we would all say we want our kids to be safe, happy, and healthy. How does the curriculum contribute to this? Starting in elementary school, kids will learn about different gender identities. By giving kids a vocabulary to talk about gender identity, the curriculum promotes understanding and takes away stigma. And this is incredibly important. Why? It's important to promote understanding and awareness of gender diversity because it literally saves lives. LGBTQ+ youth report much higher levels of suicidal thoughts, anxiety, and depression than their cisgender peers. However, when LGBTQ+ youth feel accepted at home, at school, or by a friend, these rates are much lower. So by promoting awareness and understanding of gender identity, school curriculum is promoting the health, happiness, and safety of its students. I want all the kids in our school to feel safe, happy, and healthy. As a mom of a trans child, I know my son faces some unique challenges. I worry about his safety, that other kids will say unkind things to him, and that he has to wonder each time he meets someone whether they will accept him for who he is. And he's an amazing kid, kind, smart, hardworking, and funny. So going back to my mantra, I want him to be safe, happy, and healthy. It's a scary world out there, but I've always thought Glen Rock was more warm and welcoming than the wider world. I hope it continues to be a welcoming place and that we can support each other and support our kids. I thank the Board of Ed for working so hard to create a more inclusive school environment, and I voice my support for the inclusive nature of the state health curriculum. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Julia Bowden, 34 Cambridge. I'm 16 years old, and I'm a student at Glen Rock High School. Much like the previous speaker, Ms. Popolardo, said, queer kids need to feel included in as many spaces as possible, because, as you might not fully understand, not having to deal with this yourself, suicide, self-harm, and so many other things are skyrocketing in the queer community. It's very difficult to be a queer student anywhere. When I was thinking about what I wanted to say, I was thinking about many statements I could make, many topics I could brush over, but I kept coming back to one question. Why is this such a debate? I am a queer student, as I mentioned, and I need to have this representation in my education. I need to walk into class and know that they're not going to only be talking about the people I'm sitting next to. I need to be represented as well. Why would I go to school just to not learn anything about myself and to only learn about the other people? What if I marry a female when I'm older, and I don't fully understand how we can have children, something that I'd like to do one day? This needs to be part of our curriculum for me and many others. As I mentioned, I'm a student at this school, and I feel that this is so important to me, more so than it is important to some other people in this room, who are just spewing out their opinions because they feel that everything should go their way. We need to think about all the students at this school. We need to think about all the students at this school, the heterosexual ones, the straight ones, the gay ones, the trans ones, it doesn't matter. We need to understand that this school brings together so many different people, and we need to recognize all of those people and try to meet their needs. This curriculum that is up for debate is very, very important to people like me. And no matter what we do, no matter what the vote is today or in the future, queer people will always exist. No matter if I get the actual education or not, I'm still going to be queer. My friends are still going to be queer. The people I walk in the hallways with are still going to be queer. So why not? Why not have it in the education and just help us out rather than trying to push it away? Because pushing away this curriculum is not going to push us away. So just keep in mind that there are people like me who just need to know about their bodies and their lives. So do my friends. It shouldn't be this big of a deal. We just need to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Very, very inspiring.
Ashlyn Quindore, 116 Hillman Avenue. Let me just start by saying thank you to Dr. Charleston for your acknowledgement of last year's chaos. I do appreciate it, and I think that was the first time I've actually heard you apologize. And I hope moving forward that we can all work together cohesively. I also want to start by thanking the board members who considered us parents by voting yes last week. We appreciate you for the simplest reason of being considered. For context, I have a 3rd and a 1st grader both at Coleman. Last year, we saw a very passive response in ending contact tracing, and unfortunately, we saw many of our students without school for days and weeks at a time. Today, thinking ahead, I would like to know what the opt-out will look like for the new health curriculum. As I see it from last year, parents were left scrambling for childcare and kids went without learning. I never saw extended makeup sessions, educational assistance programs, or counseling for those students that got pulled out who might be struggling mentally and/or academically. What should we expect for our opt-out students? What will they be doing with their time? Homework, recess? Will they be together by grade? What if one student is alone that opts out? Will they be alone? I ask these specific questions because last year, let's just admit, was a nightmare, and so many children were left behind and forgotten about. I want to know this district will think about every student this year, not just the ones who follow suit to this new curriculum. Remember, you are the school and we are the parents. We just want the best for our children, and we do want to be responsible and behind our values and our morals that are set in place. That's our job, just being parents. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I think we need to actually have a motion to extend time. Dr. Poochie Bender, seconded by Ms. Hayward. All right, 10 more minutes.
Hi, my name is Kristen Jones-Unger, and I'm at 247 Gramercy Place. As a lifetime educator and a parent of a rising 1st grader, one of my core beliefs is that there's no such thing as other people's children. The children who have already spoken up tonight for the curriculum and the parents who have had to take a stand for their own children have my unwavering support. Public schools must serve all children, and thus, all kids and their loved ones must be represented in any curriculum we adopt. Kids deserve clear, accurate language to help them internalize the world around them, a world in which there are few true binaries, and the diversity that exists within humanity is something that should be celebrated. Additionally, the cost of not doing so is too high. For a child growing into the person they know themselves to be, to look around and see nothing that affirms their truth is profoundly damaging. For a child to attend school where language used by teachers when discussing healthy relationships doesn't reflect the loving family they come from is profoundly damaging. Sexual education has been a part of our schools for a long time, and past iterations have missed the mark in countless ways. Kids these days have access to a world of information every time we hand them a device that connects to the Wi-Fi. And our schools need to preempt the reality that if we don't talk to them about certain topics clearly, we lead them to look elsewhere. Children also know when adults are indirect or uncomfortable discussing certain topics with them, and school must be a place where age-appropriate factual clarity is imperative. I fully trust the educators who have worked on this curriculum, and I'm here tonight to voice my support of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Sandy Stern, 37 Godfrey Terrace. I'm here because I'm in favor of the health curriculum as presented. I am in favor of our educational professionals being treated as trusted experts in child development and curriculum development. Just because we've all been through school ourselves does not make us qualified to design curriculum for an entire district of students bearing in ages and needs. I am in favor of public education, and public education must include the public, all the public, even the people who don't act or exist in a way in which we are, with which we are comfortable. Acknowledging someone's existence and their right to exist does not make us become it. It's not contagious or dangerous, but what is dangerous is what happens when we don't teach our kids accurately, factually, and with consideration of who they are. Shame is dangerous. Self-loathing is dangerous. A distorted view of oneself is dangerous. Lacking self-worth is dangerous. Our teachers can protect our students by acknowledging them and their right to exist, the rights of their caregivers to exist, their relatives and their friends to simply exist. By passing this curriculum, we are welcoming all and excluding none. No one will lose anything. Mentioning and teaching about families with two mommies doesn't mean that we're not teaching about families with a mommy and a daddy. Mentioning and teaching that sometimes people dress in ways that show how they feel on the inside doesn't mean we're not allowing a girl who wants to wear a dress to wear a dress. Including more doesn't mean excluding in order to make room. I ask the Board of Ed to trust the experts they hired to research and design the curriculum to do their job and pass.
Thank you.
Hi, Becca Call, 67 Hazelhurst Ave. And I'm here today to say that I do support the curriculum as it's being modified. Children should have access to reliable and unbiased information about gender identity issues at a younger age, and all methods of pregnancy should be presented at the time children are learning about reproduction. Providing information about these issues earlier will help create an environment where it's more difficult for hatred and shame to take root. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pooja Mathur, 162 McKinley Place, Glen Rock. I'm here to talk about a few facts. I support the curriculum, the sex education curriculum as it is, and I just want to share a few facts which brought me to that decision. I was reading an article which told me that 29% of transgender youth have been threatened or injured with a weapon on school property compared to 7% of cisgender youth. 43% of transgender youth have been bullied on school property compared to 18% of cisgender youth. Transgender youth were more likely in 2019 to have been bullied on school property than reported in 2017. 29% of gay or lesbian youth and 31% of bisexual youth have been bullied on school property compared to 17% of straight youth. 29% of transgender youth have attempted suicide compared to 7% of cisgender youth. 21% of gay and lesbian youth and 22% of bisexual youth have attempted suicide compared to 7% of straight youth. When I read these statistics to my daughter, she could think of several people who have actually gone through all of these experiences. I'm here to support the curriculum because I am saddened by the data, and I want the bullying and discrimination towards LGBTQ youth to stop. The data says that this discrimination is increasing every year, and we need to go the opposite way. I wholeheartedly support the sex education curriculum because it will provide authentic information to our children about the LGBTQIA+ community, and it will inculcate the values of kindness, respect, and inclusion. At the end of the day, we are all human, and we need to be kind to each other. We need to teach our children to be the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Luca Popolardo, and I live at 165 Berkeley Place. I'm going to be a junior at Glen Rock High School, and I'm a trans student. I've been out to my family and friends for over a year and came out in school during my sophomore year. I'd like to start by saying that being able to come out and transition has had an immeasurable impact on my mental health, and I feel very lucky to have been able to. I know part of the reason that I felt safe enough to come out is because I live in a town like Glen Rock. Even with a supportive community, coming out is still scary. I remember how nervous I was when I changed my name and pronouns in school. As nervous as I was, my teachers were amazing. They all smoothly changed the way they addressed and referred to me, and some even went out of their way to make sure I knew they supported me. That made all the difference. I think the only people I got mixed reactions from were other students. A lot of them were great, just like the teachers. Others were a little confused, and some made a few out-of-hand remarks. I don't believe that everyone in the last category of kids is inherently hateful or transphobic. Rather, I think that they have not been exposed or educated about gender diversity. This is why the new curriculum is so important. By teaching kids about these things at a young age, it reduces bias and confusion, making the school a better place for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Luca.
Hi, I'm Gayatri, and I'm a sophomore in high school. I live in 162 McKinley Place. I didn't know I was gay until 7th grade. In fact, I had no idea what the word gay meant until I was 12. Believe it or not, I first heard the word gay in elementary school. My name is spelled G-A-Y-A-T-R-I. I was always nervous for the first day of school when the teacher took attendance and pronounced by the name as Gayatri. I knew that as soon as the words left her mouth, kids around the room would start snickering and mumbling under their breath, "She's gay." I was known as the Gay Tree or the Gay Guy. Not only was I thoroughly embarrassed by my name, thinking that gay was an insult, but I was also horrified when I finally figured out that I identified with the word. I know that there are people out there that think kids in elementary school should not know anything about the LGBTQIA+ community, but kids like me carry the shame of knowing that they're different throughout elementary school until they're old enough to know. Sex education is not only for the kids in the community, but also for the kids who don't identify in the community. If all children are aware of themselves and others and are able to accept differences, our community will be a better place. I've met people identifying as transgender who have been brutally bullied in school and called awful names that I do not wish to stay, battling with severe anxiety and depression at the mere age of 10. School is the one place where a child should know that they are safe. When a child walks into a school knowing that they will be accepted and respected for who they are, they will no longer have to be scared. A lot of kids from the community are not as lucky as I am to have found a place where they can be their authentic, beautiful selves. We tell our children on their first days of school, "Just be yourself." They can't be themselves if their community will refuse to understand them. Education is the most powerful thing you can give to those in need. If we implement the sex education curriculum, we can bring children together instead of shoving an entire community under a rug to suffer silently so that kids like me do not have to be ashamed of who they are.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment? Okay, one more. So I need to extend it one more time. Mr. Hayward, seconded by Stevenson. 10 more minutes.
Jackie DeRora, 50 Kenmore. I spoke last week, and I don't want to reiterate all of those things, but I just wanted to say a few things I didn't have time to say. First of all, these kids, wow, you're amazing. I am floored, but not surprised. So, a couple things I wanted to put out there tonight. Glen Rock is indeed home to families who come from many different backgrounds, many different personal religious beliefs and cultural views. It's a beautiful, wonderful thing. It's something we celebrate right in our town. However, it is, you know, this doesn't, this shouldn't need to be said, but I feel like it needs to be said, is that that diversity and your right to hold your own personal religious views, of course, does not mean that your own personal religious views should somehow be inserted into the curriculum, in any curriculum, sex and health, ed, social studies, science, right? That's why we have separation of church and state. That's why we're the beautiful country that we are and that we're always striving to be. It's not the country we live in. And I want to just encourage the board to not feel pressured to engage in debate that really is about a culture war, right? We need to keep the debate about facts and data, and I'm glad that's what you're doing. Because while so many of us do share these core beliefs, we love our children, we love our town, we love our families, we want our kids to go to great schools, we do differ, you know, in some of our, in our values and our views, and that's totally fine, and that's totally okay. But I want to encourage everyone here, even if you're coming in here thinking, "Oh, I'm opting out." Full stop, for sure, I'm opting out. I was raised in a really conservative home myself. Some of my family members still are religiously and culturally, and that's fine, and we still have, we love each other very much. But I grew over years, as many of us have, and learning about these things and becoming a citizen and a person in a community who is more tolerant doesn't mean that you're changing your own sexuality necessarily because of your learning these things. I really, really, really encourage these, any family out here, for us to talk more about it, and if you're considering opting out to really look into it more, talk to anyone in this room. You can Facebook message me, anybody here, to consider opting in, even if you feel, you might feel that it's somehow against your religious views, but I don't know if that's necessarily true, right? Because your children can hold those religious views by still learning and still learn these things, right? They are not two things that are in opposition. And I just wanted to put that out there, and I think that all of us and all of our children will be better if we could consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will close public comment at 7:20. Do we want to explain? All right. So can I get a motion to move? I can't even find the agenda right now. Mr. Hayward, seconded by Ms. McNabola. So we'll go with the vote.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes.
Ms. McNabola?
Yes.
Dr. Poochie Bender?
Yes, but before I absolutely finish this, I would like to just thank all of the parents who took the time to write. Regardless of what your personal feelings and thoughts are, this is exactly what I wanted, a forum for everyone to be able to express themselves, and we can learn from each other. I think there's a few out there that we should hire for consultants, so, thank you, and yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Rundell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I realize, I realize this is, this is kind of out of, out of order, and if you don't mind me just say anything, that's fine.
No, of course.
I think in, in doing the meeting this way, I feel so much more relieved about the program, and I feel about, about all the curriculum. Number one, I was not thinking of any of the teachers or any of the people. I want to thank all the teachers for every single one of the curriculum projects that occurred this year because I know they work very hard. Years ago, I was selected to be a parent on a history, I don't know why, program when we were doing curriculum work, and we sat, sat around, and mostly it was the teachers that were talking, and they were so intelligent and so smart, and they understood everything that was going on. So I want to thank all the teachers that were involved in this.
Thank you. So I guess before we adjourn, I really did want to say thank you to all the students that spoke. I wasn't really sure what we were going to get into tonight, but the best thing that happened tonight was highlighting how amazing those students are, all of our students, and clearly, something is going right, so, thank you all, you're very inspiring, and I need a motion to adjourn. So, thank you all, you're very inspiring, and I need a motion to adjourn?
I have a comment. There's a couple of things I wanted to clarify based on comments tonight. There was a comment made in the public regarding how curriculum was presented and approved in the past. So, just so everyone's aware, this is actually, to the best of my knowledge, going back 10 years, the first time that the board has been provided curriculum and presented on prior to voting. In the past, I look at August 28th, 2018, the board approved curriculum similar to what was on the agenda last week with no presentation. And then the presentation followed on September, looks like September 25th. Following year, the board approved curriculum on April 27th, 2019, with no presentation. And then there was, curriculum was then presented to the board on September 10th, 2019. So I just want to clarify that, yes, this is a different process this year. The board was given the full curriculum, and the community was presented the curriculum prior to the board voting. The allegation that the board was doing something incorrect is not accurate. The board actually has been more transparent and forthcoming this year by providing the curriculum and presenting prior to voting versus waiting on a whole nother month to, to do that as was done in, in years past. So I did want to correct that. You're certainly welcome to look at previous agendas. Sure, you can go back several years and find that it's an accurate statement. The other piece is, we've gotten questions regarding the opt-in versus opt-out. At this time, we're going to remain with the opt-out. We will look into electronic format. In speaking with the principals, we're, we're, it's, it's not an excuse, we're just a little busy with, with the, the new teacher orientation, but we'll get this all hammered out in the next week or so. But in speaking with the K-5 principals in particular, it looks like there's going to be about eight to 10 lessons overall throughout the course of the year for students in grades K-5. So they don't plan on starting those lessons until October. So they will finalize their letters over a couple of weeks in September and get those letters out to parents no later than September 28th, and they'll communicate this out in the beginning of the year. And then give parents a couple of weeks to decide whether or not to opt out. Between now and then, we'll look into the feasibility of whether or not we can do that electronically in, in Genesis. It's a little bit harder than it seems because it's not just, it's easy to do one single opt-out, it's difficult to do multiple opt-outs. So our IT people are, are looking into that, because you may be okay with the hygiene lesson, but not the human reproduction, human reproductive lesson. So we will do some more research, research into that. That's all I have to say. Ms. Rundell, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Charleston. So I need a motion to adjourn. Ms. McNabola, signed by Mr. Hayward. All in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.